Good evening, everyone. And welcome to Monday, June 2nd, 2025, kind of right now, Friday morning meeting. I'd like to get started. We have a call. I'm expecting everybody to be here, but we're trying to get it started. So you have the meeting agenda before you. We're going to add to that on your discussion only. An update on Mark and Schipler, who called on us on White's Kohans Road, and we're waiting on the D E C jurisdictional determination. So we've got an update and a discussion by your mayor. Meeting notes, you have Jim's meeting notes? Any comments, questions? Do I have a motion to accept them? Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Post extension motion carries. You have the May 19 minutes in draft form. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Motion, please. So vote, motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Post extension motion carries. Correspondents and announcements. I do not have anything. Have Jim anything, anyone else? All right. Then we can begin with, we have two new applications before us this evening. And we'll start with the first, which is 52 Morton Road. Stephen Saragidini, Sir Geney, sorry, giving this pronunciation.
That's okay. We're the architecture representative of the clients.
Our architect, you can hold the microphone and let us know what you would like to do.
Evening, board. Thank you, thank you for seeing us. Christopher Dear with S3 Architecture, Michael Zlochowski. And we're here regarding the application for special use permit at 52 Morton Road in Brannbeck. This is on the Hudson River. It's in the Hudson, in the zoning district HP20 with the W R P O in for a special use permit. We're proposing mostly renovation and alterations of existing structures. There are four in the scope of work here. Renovation and alteration of the existing main residence built in 1992. This is the alteration of existing single-family five-bed or three-bath residence, including all new windows, doors, revised interior wall layout, new finishes and fixtures, construction of new roof framing throughout, new floor height, exterior walls at the second floor, new foundation walls, piers, and porches, and a second replacement of porch framing with new foundation walls. The goal of this renovation is to open up the house. This house was built in a sort of a craftsman style in 1992. Doesn't really open up to the river, nor to its own yard. And so that's something that the clients brought to us as a design challenge, knowing our work and working with sort of a take on traditional cords in a modern way, but always using natural materials to make it fit very well to give it a landscape to be very contextual. The alteration does ask for a couple of new bathrooms inside. Basically making the bedrooms all en suite for the family and their children. We're repurposing a den on the ground floor as a guest suite. So we're basically taking one bedroom away from the upstairs and making the den on the ground floor for full en suite for visiting parents, for example. We're increasing the floor height of the existing residence, but only by capturing sort of dead space. As you'll see in the site photos of the house, the roof is very low slung on the second floor. There's an incredible amount of wasted space on the second floor. So the clients wanted to get full-size bedrooms with full-size windows upstairs at a nice ceiling height. We've been able to do that in the design by actually continuing the ridge line of the existing structure, about 35 feet high from the ground plane to have a full-size second floor. There is some panel levers on the existing design for the second floor, so the second floor has more square footage than the first floor did. We're keeping those and just beefing them up structurally. So a lot of the house, the new design is irreferential to the old, but it's bringing it to a more modern look whilst still remaining contextual. Although the proposal does comply with zoning regulations, there is no change in the use or occupancy. The second part of the proposal is renovation of an existing structure that was a studio. It's basically an artist's photography studio that was on the property. The clients don't use it, it doesn't really fit their needs. So they want to basically alter and update that studio structure residence as well, accessory structure as well, to actually include a one-bedroom and one full bath. There is currently a full bath, it will be renovated. All new windows indoors, revised interior wall layout, finishes and fixtures, but no change in the sort of bulk of that building itself. It will be the same height and infillment, just basically new interior layout and finishes. The third part of the proposal is a garage accessory structure, which is existing as well. It is two-story. There's a garage parking on the lower level, and the upper level is currently underutilized. One of the clients uses it as a center gym. So we are updating that structure to be better efficient with HVAC and lighting. New windows indoors to improve thermal envelope and the overall look of it. New roofing and plating to match the main residence. Again, no change in occupancy or use. Then the fourth, the fourth part of our proposal is reconstruction of a pool. There is an existing sort of kidney-shaped pool on the site. It doesn't really fit the aesthetic that the clients are going for, so it asks us to include this in the proposal. It would be a new 40-by-16-foot rectangular pool. It does interestingly fit completely within the existing pool footprint. So we don't want to cause much more disturbance down there where it is, it is facing Hudson River. So with this proposal, there would be new wood decking and a boost of pavement around. They're proposing a new pergola built out of wood and some metal structure to hold together an outdoor shower. And then basically a constriction of the existing pool fencing to get it tighter into the pool area so it's not so obvious from the house, and also recapture some yard space, which is valuable there. Because we were doing all this, the four proposals were proposing a bit of a very light touch, actually, landscape design on the same property. More improved the landscaping proposal from last year, which we were not involved with. We were working on the house design while they were doing the landscaping design that you approved. So this proposal is going to include some new landscaping around the house, actually improving some of the drainage areas around the house with landscaping and plantings, retaining all mature trees, adding new native plantings, new stone walkways, and all night sky compliant pathways. And then similar around to the garage, and similar up to the accessory structure. And then new native planting, night sky compliant pathways and that's the overall picture. So that's basically it.
So, I guess I had missed the third reconstruction of the pool. Back to the spinning, the basic footprint, I think it's good. I'll just have to take a look at that and make sure I don't have any issues with any setbacks or anything. Either in that existing area, maybe it would be considered a reconstruction if there. Maybe I'll double check that and miss that.
I don't believe it was discussed.
It wasn't, that was added afterwards, after we finalized the landscaping scope.
So overall, I noted that the, I guess the proposal for the property is pretty significant, but majority of this is related to the structure itself, or structures themselves, and changes to the interior. We talked before at the pre-con about the fact that a number of the changes that were proposed, and we can get into this, create spaces that could be considered potentially to be bedrooms. As everyone knows, we've been through a lot of applications. So we'll have to talk about what you do or don't determine this so it can be a bedroom. Floor plans, county health department, could it be required? I think you've already started that or initiated a conversation with them, or no?
Yeah, we have, we have supporting documentation to address that. There has been, as you know, a report on an existing sensitive system, which actually supports up to seven bedrooms. We have six in the proposal, so we wanted to talk to the board first.
Right, so that, and so where we land on that will obviously depend on where we land on the number of potential bedrooms in the structure. One thing that you will need, and to talk about the pre-con, is New York State D E C jurisdictional determination. I don't know where that stands, I've heard from them.
We already submitted that with our support engineer, and we received, I think, printout of the confirmation that the request was submitted. And I don't believe the current approval at this, this time is required. There's a waiting period.
They have 100 days to get back to you. At the 100-day mark, you have 100. So you're in the, you're in the process there.
Yeah, yes, we submitted right after the pre-con.
Yes, I'll take a little more of a look at the pool, just to make sure we don't have any issues there. But overall, I think the main discussion that I identified with this is the number of bedrooms. I think this is something to be mindful of also.
Yeah, that's a great point. I do want to also talk to the board about that, with our proposal plan. All of the, all of the bathrooms are now en suite, two bedrooms to the five bedrooms in the main house, and we have two other rooms. So therefore, we can keep going. That sounds like stage 16, system. She was on the 16th. Yep. Yeah, for example, you have the ground floor there, there's an outer room. The bedroom has the bathroom en suite, and then you just have a home office for one of the clients. And we have kids' playroom, because they can keep their audio up there, but it's your porch. Those are the only two rooms that they can serve as, but there is no full bathroom available that's going into another occupied space. And the same on the, this.
What is the bathroom available here? You're saying there's an en suite bathroom in this space.
There's no full bathroom for any other room in the house that could be thought of as a bedroom. There's no way to get to a bathroom unless you're going into someone else's bedroom suite.
The definition of bedroom doesn't, doesn't dictate like that.
No, I just wanted to add that.
It's available, windows, stairs.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we live through this, you know, since the plans are here, you have a kids' playroom here, and you have an office, which we discussed potentially could be considered bedrooms. So we've opened that up for the board for discussion. Where is the second floor?
We have three kids' bedrooms that are en suite as well, and then there is a second snug room, which is sort of the name for an intimate space where their individual homework, or close their friends. And then the primary suite is completely, obviously, en suite.
So this, this was another one, you know, potential discussions whether or not you thought it could be a bedroom or not. It was a bit small, it was an eight-by-12. So it's a big bedroom necessarily, certainly potentially could be. This was the accessory structure, where there is a proposed bedroom. I don't think the bedroom count is changing here for quite a while. But you do have the studio office is being created, which is new, which we discussed in the pre-con, could potentially be considered a bedroom. And there's an existing home gym, which is conditioned space, which is not a bedroom.
But again, it is conditioned space above the garage.
Right, yeah, plumbing. Okay, well plumbing.
We're not plumbing.
That is, that is conditioned space above the garage, potentially could be as well. So the, the big discussion that I found in doing this, you know, the pool is just how many bedrooms, plenty of these could be here. Home gym, 11, I think there's a studio office in this building, which is one. Snug room is two. And then the main room, there's the office and kids' playroom. So we have a total of four additional spaces that I want to let you take. Beyond that, again, I think there's a lot of work taking place, most of it is structural buildings.
Any board members? Questions, comments, please, Tom? Carrie, you want to change up your proposal? Draft procedural resolution?
Yes. So moving forward to consideration, draft procedural resolution for the application by Sir Geney or Guyer, Site Plan Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter 125 for alterations, renovations to the existing nonhistoric principal residence, garage, accessory structure, or studio of 52 Morton Road of the HP20. Accepting the application documents adequate for further review. Classifying the action as type two under secret, which coordinated by law, a review is not required. We'll schedule the public hearing for the application for July 7th?
7th.
7th? At 6:05, or earlier? We'll be sending it to the C A B, the W A C for review. Actually, I don't think they'll send this to H P A C. We'll go to Dutchess County for 239 review, and we need to find a board member in a second.
Anyone else who might want to go?
We have to see if I want to go on.
Edmet and Tom, will you email other board members when you schedule a visit? And if anybody else would like to join your thing, they can choose up if it looks up your schedule. Can, can I have a motion? So vote. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Post extension motion carries. Someone will be in touch for you to schedule for site visit.
That's great, thank you.
The second new application this evening is that of Ruby's stamp. 3718, you can change for site plan and then.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Reminski is here representing Ruby's, thank you, stop, please.
I'd like to be your crash, I'd like to be the second one.
Sure.
You can go ahead.
Keep talking. You can't, we're talking about the plans.
Well, I can't. So, you know, I think most of the board members are familiar with the process, but just, I'll just give you my group history. Obviously, there's, we've had some multiple applications from this property. I mean, it started back in October of approval. First approval started back in October 2021. We have to go to the Chicago. That's it, okay.
Oh, that was it?
Yeah. So, you know, overall, the overall property is by the 131 acres in size. And I'll just briefly go through a little bit of the history. So we started with, you know, looking at the property, initial application for this board, you know, for site plan, special permit, approval for Ruby's moving their service and service property. And so ultimately, the first approval for that was in October 2021. And in doing that approval, we also took, just looking at the entire property, we defer to that initial approval phase one. There were two cases that were assigned to the property. Phase one is where, phase one is, was the, you know, the location of, you know, where the current service center of Subaru was going to be constructed. And so the first approval that was granted was actually, since the old Stanford, was going to be the reconstruction of the Stanford. So that was ultimately the approval for this piece here. And at the same time, it was talked about, you know, phase two. So this was phase one. Phase two was also consideration of further service for Chief Chrysler, and actually Ford also considered. And then the balance of the property was phase two. So everything that we're going to talk about tonight is related to phase one. So I mentioned, you know, the first approval for this, you know, for reconstruction, and the reconstruction renovation of the building was in October 2021. And then after they started to get into the project, Ruby's decided that it was actually more economical to better fit their needs to demolish this building. And so application was made to the board for a pre-year metal building at this location. So that, that approval was granted by the planning board in September 2022. And then as, as construction took place, there was another amendment to the site plan, which was in July 2023, was the addition of a oil storage building on North End that to be utilized as part of their, part of their operation. And then finally, there was, you know, actually another application that was made by the planning on this property. As you can see in this, this section right here, was for the cell tower to be located in the phase three portion of the property. So there was part of that application, including, you know, a roadway to be constructed to the cell tower location, which was ready. So in doing that, there were approvals required, obviously, by the town of Brannbeck Planning Board. The town of Brannbeck has only four appeals. Dutchess County Department of Health for my site, sanitary disposal, and also developing water supply for that building. And then also, New York State D E C with regard to disturbance due to construction. And so following those, all those various site plan, amended site plan applications, all approvals have been granted by the, I should say, actually, certificates have been provided to the client, obtained by the client, from the town of Brannbeck to the C O of the building, certificate of use in compliance with the site plan. Also note that part of this application was also application to New York State D I T. And so the turn lane was installed and approved, finalized by New York State D E C. And as I did mention, also permitting with New York State D E C with regard to, you know, developing all this stormwater management on the site. Disturbance was greater than five acres for this project. So stormwater management practices were designed and installed, and that natural N O T notice determination followed. So this particular application requesting a number amendment from this board is for construction of a parking lot, which is located on the north side of the building. And access to this parking lot is via this roadway that is actually constructed for the cell tower. And so, and what has, the reason for making this request to the planning board is it's actually a requirement of Subaru and New York State that Ruby's have a certain amount of inventory, you know, based on their sales. And it's actually a requirement for the PD vehicles. And so, and that's something we've actually longed for. Needs some additional parking in addition to less than, you know, parking and storage inventory. But, you know, in addition to, right, this, already been constructed in this area to this section where the community can put a less section.
But is the state requires?
So if the state requires, that's, New York State adopted legislation that 10% of the, you know, inventory needs to be electrified. And so that prompted Ruby's, they needed more space. And that's, that's the trigger that has prompted this additional cost station. And so in developing this, in developing this parking area, once again, able to utilize this existing roadway to the cell tower as reported, that's been argued constructively. And so, you know, the proposal is to create 98 double-stacked eight-by-18 parking spaces. And with the total disturbance, it'll be paid with the asphalt. There's also stormwater management features, infiltration practices that are incorporated as part of this design along the west way we were talking about. Total site disturbance is less than eight acres, only 0.7 acres. So it does, it does not require any real detailed information to be included with New York State D E C because it's less than the threshold of 28 acres. But just as, as was constructed throughout the rest of the project, using infiltration practices, you know, to handle stormwater and minimizing that. So also, in addition to that, there's, the archaeology is also considered for the entire subject. This was included in that, and with no archaeological, this was a second.
I didn't have a lot of comments for this. Just wanted to note that parking must be subordinate to a principal use. This is proposed to be subordinate to the existing super maintenance facility. So I just wanted to make sure that that is put out there, just for the record. Again, Mark noted it told disturbance is less than eight acres, so swift isn't required. Archaeological review has already been done. It was clear. I noted that J D, a D E C jurisdictional determination might be required by document. Mark, you already have a permit, so you don't need to submit the J Ds, my understanding.
So what occurred was, when I was at D E C for my work, I brought this plan because we already had a determin, obviously, for a project, we had a determination of wetlands, both state and court for this project. And so I, I brought that plan to D E C and asked if they would take a look at it. I did, I did file, you know, made the online filings, but I just thought since I was there, I took a shot. They did look at it, and I did receive a phone call back from a technician from D E C that, you know, those wetlands. It indicated that there would be no changes to the delineation that was done and was certified by D E C. So I requested the correspondence to confirm the authority.
So, you know, other than that, I really don't see a lot of writing, finding issues. You know, location won't be visible off-site, drainage has been addressed. Using a consistent driveway, it's already installed the cell tower. There are various conditional disturbances, or the total disturbance on the site is pretty minimal compared to the size of the football property. So I don't have a lot of comments.
Any board members? I have a question. Yes. What's going to be on that lot?
I can't hear you.
What's going to be on that lot, as I understand it?
Inventory, as far as far.
Will they be new?
Yes.
Will they be altered?
I don't know if they're all.
They may or may not be, but they, they will be new cars. So my question is, might Ruby's be bringing customers over to this lot to look at the new cars?
I'm not sure, you know, if Ruby's, where they show cars.
I don't understand my question. This is a service establishment. It was approved as a, you know, compound, the purpose of which is to serve as existing customers so that we tend to change the use, which is why I'm asking you this question.
It's barely for inventory, so assuming sales still take place. And so I'll just, I'll get a confirmation.
And I also was a little curious about that because you say they are mandated by Subaru to have 10% of their inventory. That's still 10% of 100%. It's not like they have to have an additional 10%. So there's the need for extra storage. Is Ruby's intent on migrating out of the village? Because it, it's, it's one of the things about this town that I think we need to be very constantly aware of, is the fact that we. constantly aware of, is the fact that we need to preserve the rural character of our town. And throughout the ages, we've seen businesses migrate out downtown districts to the cheaper, more wide spread suburbs, and that's how it gets sprawled. And it it just seems like this is a, you know, it's a little nudge in that direction?
That's not the intention. All sales still remain some.
Okay. And also, I had the pleasure of test driving a Subaru E V about six months ago. It was really nice, but I was not overwhelmed by some of the characteristics of it as far as its, you know, its mileage and its range and that sort of thing. So I I really got the sense that they're having a hard time moving their E V inventory. And this was, of course, before the first year, and I know that C A F standards are likely to change under the new administration, and that may have an implication on how fleets are constructed, and Subaru's not going to have to have so many E Vs given around. So then, you know, what then becomes the status of this, you know, more or less permanent parking spot when it's subject to fluctuations in the market?
Does a requirement of state force the issue of ten percent, whether they're selling or not?
It does, is my understanding.
So perhaps, perhaps you could ask the applicant if they could provide some kind of narrative that would explain how they will promote the sales of vehicles. I mean, will they physically move vehicles back in the village and afford to be seen? Will they present photographs? Or will they require prospective buyers to pick out the cars they want to look at? Do they give us a narrative about how they'll manage that that might answer some of the questions?
Let's keep Ruby's stuff, we'll we'll submit those down. Have a narrative.
Yeah, just how they how they'll manage it physically.
Okay.
So this, just the storage, the point is, well, taking that, how will the prospective buyers see?
And I do remember, I think, a little bit of misremembering, that when we discussed the rezoning of this project, we did discuss the fact that sales were still going to take place in the village for Subaru. It's not the intent, the sales are going to move out here, that's a very lengthy conversation we had during the rezoning. And I couldn't be wrong, but I do believe I remember hearing that essentially, there's a car that someone wanted out of the lot, and it's wanting to be brought back into the village for the purposes of a sales transaction. There was no intent based on the rezoning discussions to, you know, have people come out here for sales. And obviously, it'd be great to have it in writing, and I think that's why.
I think we should, because it's a new application.
But that was part of the discussion.
There's going to be an inclination to do that, of course. There wouldn't be much more debate, just take it out there so you can pay a look at it.
I might just add just a little bit of context also. The way, there's a very separate state permitting for a sales versus a service facility. Ruby's sales facilities are actually independently licensed as a sales facility at a specific location. So that is very specific to this village location. Sales are only allowed to occur at that location. Services is a separate, you know, permitting issue, and that is that is separate from sales. So they will remain sales in the village and service at the nineteen. That is the, I will put it.
I was just a clarification, because that's fine, I believe that's all true. Sales means sitting at a desk and filling out all the paperwork and exchanging money in cash and credit cards. So you could still drive a prospective buyer up here to look at a vehicle, but conduct the sales in the village and meet the law. So let's just get from there something.
Then I'll add that back in my day, the whole lot, the upstate was covered with Chevrolets, and they had the festival lights over it, kind of old-fashioned, old-timey. And that's gone forever. And I'm just, I'm concerned that it's one of those features that makes Lineback kind of special. I really appreciate Ruby's and what what they have done to the town and what they mean to the town. It's a, you know, a very important establishment. But you had mentioned with the whole lot that this is still only within what you're calling phase one?
This is phase one.
Are, is there a master plan that includes phase two and three that we should be aware of?
There is. And we've seen it online in question, and I don't know the multiple happy answer, but it can be with a smooth ten percent E V, if it's applicable to all types of vehicles, and it would somewhat change what we had seen originally. But that's in the future, and I think we're still looking for a number of things, including negotiating through the tribes over how the next two phases work out.
So speaking in detail of what I was going to report about that.
I don't want to muddy the waters tonight. I think we just jump.
Um, just one more thing. I think Ruby's question really wasn't answered. Why is there a need for this? Because the state requires a ten percent E V electric, but does that mean that inventory therefore needs to expand?
Correct.
I'm not used to being, I can't quite hear you fully. Say that one more time.
I was wondering what actually is the need for the increased storage space? You know, the ten percent requirement for electric cars?
Inventory doesn't increase.
I'm sorry?
Inventory doesn't increase.
So they expected an increase in inventory?
So it is a hundred and ten percent.
Oh, ten percent, is that the increase expected?
Yes.
Thank you. That helps me see.
Yeah, it was, when they first said that, it was my understanding that the idea behind this was that the E Vs were going to actually be replacing and displacing the ice vehicles, but they're not. They expect to sell just as many internal combustion vehicles plus ten percent more.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The only question I have, is there any plan for any kind of charging or lights that, so at this department area?
There are chargers at the facility now.
Are there new ones proposed?
Excuse me?
Are there new ones proposed?
No.
No, there are no chargers.
And have they considered potentially, because this is, have they considered using part of the property at phase two to kind of maybe put this lot on, knowing that that's going to be if you disturb? And that this is potentially could go through ebbs and flow if needed, right? And does it, does it make forces to look at possibly developing some of phase two property for this lot?
So it's, so as I said before, if set can speak, it can speak to phase two, but that process right now is, you know, in negotiation, it's being prepared for negotiation with the tribes, New York State D and C.
My understanding, my understanding of phase two, as I know, and if it goes along the line, is there's very little room to shift things around in phase two. The areas of sensitivity are greater on phase two and three, and part of what we're trying to do now is make it fit without disrupting the R F L, so that they don't have to do a full mitigation with the tribes, certainly, I don't believe they allow. So I think, I'm only speaking anecdotally, but I think shifting more infrastructure.
Where is this rehabilitation need to?
And this this area has been cleared, and this is less sensitive and less controversial. So I think shifting some of this there makes that even harder for them. Speaking from memory, Seth can correct me if I'm wrong.
And that that part of the site is actually technically more visible in nine G than this is, this is still in line, so the more we build out on phase two, which is off to the side over here, you know, now you're talking about, you know.
Sure. It's it's.
A lot of the discussions of the rezoning is these sheds from the road, protecting that, making sure that wasn't, you know, anyone's, it had to be, so this is.
I was saying, we're going to create, you know, hard surface already on the phase two, I was like, maybe this could be.
And the reason it has to be asphalt is what?
Maintenance?
Use of maintenance.
Use of maintenance. Once again, so in consideration, that's why we further develop, you know, stormwater management, infiltration practices, implementation.
But I think one concern that I'm hearing is that, you know, if this is going to be required here, I like to just have to see changes in your future development because the same stage requirement is going to be here, so something's got to be.
So that's all being considered, looking on the phase two portion of the property.
It's going to be a silly question, but like, how many cars does that translate to, as you're asking, approximately?
You said, you said how many slots?
Yes, so there's ninety-eight.
Okay, ninety-eight. And totally not to repeat what everybody said, specifically with a thought that comes to my head, like, like, you know, I said, it's not just the sale or visiting, also like the test driving, right? Like, would they drive someone there and say, oh, test drive is from that point? So maybe we can just, in the in the language, talk about sales, test driving, viewing, and make some of these notes, you know, specifically.
For the steps of the city.
I'll make, I'll make sure it's very clear.
Amazing.
And could you also just for information only, identify for us how many vehicles are currently on the show lots in the village?
Okay.
Because that will give us a baseline of what, so it's going to be that plus potentially ninety-eight?
Uh, you know, I'll.
I mean, that's going to, you can that do, right? So they're asking for more.
Well, I, yeah, there's also parking, I grew up, the whole, uh, thought, was it, it's right across from the fair, uh, down from the fair ground to have cars parked there. I mean, they just, they have a ton of cars. Like, that's just reality. We have a very tight space in the village. And and they have ten of the same car, the same car. So, you know, it's just, it's, I think, but.
Yeah, because there are other, what's the lot he's talking about, by Mike's tree service, aren't there swaying vehicles there?
Just can't change it.
Yeah. So let's get to clarification of.
Sure.
And anybody else? Jim, do you have a draft procedural resolution?
Draft procedure resolution for the board's consideration. The application by Ruby's to move for site plan approval under chapter one, two, five, for construction of a supportive parking lot at thirty-seven eighteen route nine G with the O L P zoning district, accepting the application square documents as adequate for further review. Consenting actions type two, for which coordinated environmental quality review is not required. It's given in public hearing for July seventh at six oh five P M. We will send this to C and B for review. We will send it to H A P A, you know, it has been put for archaeology, but it's still a historic site, and we go to Dutchess County Planning, and we get these two planning board members to go second.
We're both to go.
I'll go.
Sean? I'll go, Ms. Sean. Add to your body knowledge?
Yeah.
All right, may I have a motion to accept a draft procedure resolution?
I'm expecting a motion.
A motion in second, always in favor. I opposed section motion first, thank you. We can move now into the public hearing portion of this evening's meeting, and first up is Joel Hearn, four-four-three, Melrose Site Plan Review, the abandonment of a microhydro previously proved, about, well, as I arrived this evening, I learned that Mr. Hearn is in Alaska and will not be present this evening. However, we have, we can update you on a number of things. C P L is on site with Brian Tam, we can update you on that. We've had additional discussions. We'd like to discuss some ideas that have come up in terms of moving this board based on what we know at this point. So I'll turn it over to Jim. We have contacted by email. When we went, Mr. Hearn was not here, we informed him by email that we were going to continue to discuss this tonight and not continue it. So he's been noticed, but with that notification from him, there's nothing more we can do. But we have concluded it's best for us to continue our discussion, so.
Did he respond to anything positive?
Okay, well, we'll get to that.
So as everyone knows, we've been talking about this one for quite a while. Mr. Hearn came in originally for microhydro that was going to be attached to the dam. The work that ended up happening was he not attached the microhydro to the dam, and he ended up digging out around the side of the dam to put in a different unit because he couldn't buy the one that I guess that he had originally proposed, so he put in the concept for what he wanted to do for the new.
And these photos, Jim, are these?
These photos came from the most recent site visit. We had C P L go out with Joel, I think these were submitted by Joel in his most recent submission, just showing the existing conditions, kind of what's out there. You know, I I've taken a look at a lot of photos in the past, I haven't been out to the site, but the one that really did catch my mind, and I didn't know that this was, you know, a lot of earthwork, is this is our zoning administrator right here.
We were talking like two weeks ago, like, how long ago?
About two weeks ago. So it helps put in perspective just kind of what happened here, and you, my looking at this, you know, I knew it was a lot of earthwork.
Trying to talk back.
Yeah. So so we got this new information from from Joel, we got the site photos, C P L had staff go out, talk with Joel about what needed to be done, because we really need the engineers to be part of this discussion and help with mitigation plans. What we've been asking for for a while was something more than the plan that Joel had been providing, essentially said we're just going to return it back to the way it was, something that was sort of more aggressive planting plan, and some additional details to show us what he proposed going to do. So last, Wednesday or Thursday, we got this planting plan, we got a shoreline detail of sorts, and then we also got a proposal for this flotation device, which was apparently proposed by the C P L staff, which will essentially divert the water above, supposed to divert the water above the dam, so they can know when to do the work in that trenched area that he that he filled here, with having either minimal or no water running through it while he's doing that, to try and prevent any more dirt and sediment from going down with the creek. So after talking with Melody, talking with planning board attorneys, thinking about this a little further, and then with Brian and Tam, who obviously saw the site visit, given that this work was done without authorization, and the fact that we do, I think, finally now have some plans that I think are useful, I've talked to C P L, including today, about their availability. My thinking is that we want to get this thing wrapped up, it's going to get a ton of rain. My recommendation is that the board consider allowing us to move forward for remediation right now, under the direct supervision of C P L, on behalf of the zoning administrator and the planning board, under the fact that it's under a violation notice right now, we will hold off on approving the plans until this has been restored. And once it has been restored, C P L essentially says it has been restored the way we think it should be, and Mr. Hearn's engineer signs off on it, saying, yes, it has been restored the way it was, but we're not asking C P L to acknowledge the work done is inappropriate, we're just going to have them oversee it, because Brian and the building department don't have the kind of geotechnical background to do any of this, so we'll have the C P L staff out, oversee what's going on, Mr. Hearn will have to coordinate with them on how it's going to be done, whatever whatever that is, it's between the two of them, C P L will work on it behalf, keeping Brian in the loop, obviously, with all the way myself, get the work done to stabilize all of this, and when they've signed off on it, his engineer signed off on it, he can come back to the planning board then and ask for approval of the site plan.
And then at that point, you notice about, well, you have to get the notice of violation lifted and a stop work order.
That way, we can ensure that the work is being done the way it should be through C P L, and we're not approving the plan until we're sure that it's been done. This is a little unique, and then it's it's restoration work, and it's under that violation. It's not like someone's coming in saying, I want to do this, and ask for permission.
And I've been thinking about it in the same way that Ed Matic, building inspector approaches his inspections, and that is, there's a checklist of, you don't move on to the next phase until you complete this, so that would be created for this, and C P L will not allow them to go to the next step until they've signed off on what you've completed is the way we want it to be. And we're also, we're just finished, we're also, Matt was retching, is indicating that Joel got back to her, and told him if the board agreed with this approach, he would have to deposit seventy-five hundred dollars in his S P R O account immediately in order for this to go forward, so that the money was there for C P L, was there for Jim's work, and there for the attorney's work, obviously, continues. And she's indicated that he's responded, that he will make that deposit. So we were in contact with the C P L and Christian Moore to say, are you prepared to move immediately if we can do this? Because don't tell me you don't have an engineer that can't go out for four weeks, do you have somebody that's prepared to go now? Do you have somebody that's prepared to go now, as soon as we can go together? And they indicated that they would have somebody to do it.
How often would they be on the site?
I would think they would have to be, I don't, I, having not seen the plan, my expectation was they would be there when the work is going on.
That's what I think is absolutely necessary.
We, we will, yeah, I think the idea is, I can all talk to Christian, I did talk to him today. They would have to be there regularly, would he be there for eight straight hours on a day? I don't know, that's between them. But Christian understands, CPL understands what we're asking them to do, which is to oversee this and make sure that it's being done to the best extent possible to prevent any further damage and that when it's done, we're not going to have a future issue where it gets washed away to the extent that any of that can be done. And they'll be representing the zoning administrator. The, the guy he tends to send out is the one who was out two weeks ago and is also the, um, engineer who's been working, um, at T Corp from the initial work doing the inspections. So, he has been in town before and just kind of sort of knows.
I mean, I would think that there would have to be at least a day or so. I, I would expect a person representing CPL to be there once a day, which I mean, whether it's the end of the day, I don't know, but, um...
A lot of the important requirements are procedural, like having the booms in place, the copper dams that have to be in place for certain operations to take place. But once those operations are complete, they have to be removed, removed properly. So, CPL would know what those critical moments are, and if they go ahead and just do it, and, oh, well, we had time, you know, we had daylight and, or it's going to rain tomorrow, so we went ahead and did it anyway. Uh, that's, that's work that's going to have to get rejected if they don't follow the procedure and...
Well, we're going to have to, I, I would assume we're going to have to have a Zoom call with the representative from CPL that will be doing the work to outline specifically the manner in which we expect the inspection to take place. That's why I'm talking about here's stage one, here's stage two, here's stage three.
It's just that there's a history with this particular site of work being done outside of what was permitted for what seemed like perfectly rational reasons, like, you know, it was going to torrentially rain and we needed to get it closed off right away, so we didn't put the booms down, oops, I'm sorry.
But all you're thinking, Cass, because we're going to get asked for some sort of, you know, vote this evening as to what we're doing and make sure that you're including in that any of these specific details that have gone through, so it's in the record as to what our expectation of Mr. Herm is.
But those concerns are part of the reason why I think this approach works best because the notice of violation is believed there until this is all done.
If we withhold it, if that's not...
If it's done correctly.
If we withhold approval, the violation will be lifted, this will get approved. And then, it's just a matter of going out and doing site visits later typically done. We, we want to do this one totally differently just because of what's been done and the discussions. So, that's the thinking behind this, not that we have, like, for substantial.
Who would actually be doing the work? Which company?
Joel's contractors would be doing the work.
Oh, and they have experience.
That's...
So, I think essentially what we want is we want Joel's contractor to be reporting to CPL.
CPL will be in the field, they will absolutely be reporting, right, to CPL, that's, that's it. My, my understanding when they went out with Brian was he looked at it and said, there's a lot of work to be done here. And Brian, I think, was pretty confident, he seemed to understand what he would be done to get it done right. So, I'm confident CPL staff will keep an eye on it, you know, as it's like... Joel had known, I think, in one of our meetings, it would take two or three days to do all this. I, I find that hard to believe.
Right.
And that's why we want someone out there to just take, if you can do it in three days, okay. But we want to make sure someone's there on town's behalf, speaking on things, as they look for stuff.
I'm doubtful that you can do it properly according to what's in CPL's requirements into a three days.
And something always overwhelms, and so we don't want the contractor to go to Joel and say, well, we're going to do blah, 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 and Joel to say, well, do this. That's why I'm saying he should be recording to CPL. Anything comes up, any, you know, derivations of what the plan was, he's got to approve it.
We'll, we'll be in contact with them, but I think it will primarily be between the contractor and, and CPR to work out the scheduling and how they think this is going to work, and we'll obviously keep an eye on that according to Brian. That's, that's the thinking.
Well, we can certainly encourage, and maybe, I don't know how much further we can go, like, it seems to me that a pre-construction meeting between the CPL engineer, Brian, the field, and the full, and the contractor should sit down and have a meeting of the minds before even our task. So, the chain of command that we're talking about, that is recognized and reinforced. Any other questions?
Okay, just to point out, if I remember correctly, it's the same contractor that did the work before. So, add that oversight, you know, is imperative, right? Um, and maybe it's, doesn't, it doesn't even matter anymore, but it doesn't even look like the, the tilt fence that we once again requested again is still not put up, right? But we're here, and the bottom line is it's all about finding a solution. And I appreciate, you know, the creativity in finding a new path because it's got to get done. And, you know, having some accountability through that process, I think, is a good solution.
Well, Brian described being in the field and that it was just ground, muddy water running into this, into the street.
Didn't he say it was just stone, that there's no, there's no, there's no dirt?
I can see here, the condition.
Only stone, it's just mud.
This is what's happening, just mud over the last few weeks. So, this is our attempt to try and stem that to the best of our ability to do so. Um, Jim, do you have something, I don't know that we need a full resolution, just to...
I don't, but I think you'd like to read something, I just put together quickly. Um, just asking for the board to, um, consider...
It's probably a good idea.
Approving a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, the town zoning administrator, and the applicant to discuss the path forward. The applicant can begin work under the direct supervision of CPL and directly coordinate with CPL and undertake the work. And once the seven thousand five hundred dollar escrow is, uh, has been submitted, he can begin coordinating with CPL.
Do you want, you say that the applicant will work directly with CPL? Do you want to say the applicant and the contractor, or the contractor will work direct? I mean, at this point, it's subtle, but...
Yeah, I'd like from the contractor.
Contractor can begin work under the direct supervision.
Reporting to CPA.
How do you feel about that?
I agree, otherwise, the contractor is, he is, he is required to talk to Joel. And then, there's a, there's another step in this, and Joel makes the command. I think it simplifies it, CPL is, is the leading force to both people, to both groups.
I don't know, in, in my world, it's, you have a contract with your principal, and the other people work for that person, and everything has to go through, you know, whoever the agreement is with. And without, uh, you know, CPL stepping in and having a separate independent contract with, um...
Joel could designate...
Yeah, if Joel gives permission, says, I just want you to be in communication with them, he's the principal, and he told them that that's, they need to communicate, then they will.
Right, but as, as the owner, he has to be in the hot seat, and he has to be held accountable. And like Melody said, if the steps aren't followed, then we just don't lift the violation.
CPL is essentially working as an extension of, of the building department, in this case, on behalf of the town. Not on behalf of the applicant.
Yeah, I think it gets a little bit messy if they short circuit the applicant.
But I think we'll say that the contractor can begin work under the direct supervision of CPL and then directly coordinate with...
Right, and any deviation from the plan, like, and it says, you know, things come up and, you know, you find something or something goes wrong, you got to deal with it, they would submit some sort of an RFI or something like that, or change order to, to, you know, CPL for approval. Uh, they couldn't just get the okay from...
We have, you know, driving rain for five days, flood stage, stuff starts to wash downstream.
Yeah, yeah. Anything you have?
Well, we will make it abundantly clear that any change that they deem necessary to consider will have to be rewarded to Brian, uh, who's overseeing the mitigation.
Right, but, uh, do we have to give some sort of provision for CPL to handle, you know, things that are outside of what we... Like, they shouldn't have to come before the planning board every time there's a change in the plan.
No, I think local trust and CPL knows what needs to be done in terms of the order of putting back that rock and drums and all that kind of stuff. If something major happens, it all was to put it back the way it was. So, there's an assumption that it's like it was. If they're not going to put it back the way it was, then obviously we would have, you know, something to talk about. But I think the idea is to get CPL out there, get all this work done, have them say it looks okay, his engineers sign off, come back and then have us...
Yeah, they're acting as the agent of the planning board, they're our planning consultants. And we can certainly say, if, if they observe anything out of the ordinary that they feel they need support in that, I'll make sure immediately to be in touch with Jim and Brian to say, we're letting into a problem here. Um, and then Brian, who is, you know, overseeing, you know, there's a violation, the stop work for, stepped in again. That's the check on it that I think we got, there's more predicting and overseeing. Um, but this is, I think it's, it's supposed to become depending on positive or negative, because we've been able to come up with. Um, may I have a, a motion to accept Jim's recommendation?
I'll go.
Seth?
Seth.
Um, always in favor, I oppose, and section two, motion first. Thank you. I should say, is there anybody here from the public who wants to comment on this? I don't think so, okay. Um, so, the next public hearing for this evening is at T Corp LLC and KPH two LLC, one ninety-five River Road and one eighty-nine River Road. Site plans, especially used for wetlands permanent for train, fence, gates, and stone wall.
Do we need to close the conference?
Did you want to close the conference?
On Joel? No.
Okay, just making sure.
And since we have an extensive audience here this evening, are you here for this application? Since we all have had a very recent site visit and had a chance to learn in the field, everything is proposing. Um, unless the two people who weren't able to be there are desiring a full explanation again. Let me check on that, I don't know that we need to have Seth start from the beginning about what's being proposed. Not for me?
Not for me. Not for me either.
Okay, so, let's just begin the discussion then. So, we thank you for the opportunity to fully engage in the field and understand what's taking place and what you're proposing. And I guess at this point, I wish you had something new since last week to tell us.
I do have just a couple of updates that I can certainly provide. Um, Seth's the department, it's CPL LLC. Uh, just wanted to just update the planning board that, um, we did speak with and also met on site with the fire department, Chief. Um, Chief is providing us with some correspondence that will go forward to the board as soon as possible. I've got Mark met with him out there on, uh, September, uh, last Thursday, I believe.
Last Thursday, I reviewed the train and, and, you know, Phase three and four, and also the gate locations are both on, on T Corp LLC and KPH two.
Also, we have, um...
Do you have any general comments that would influence us one way or the other?
No issues at all, just providing for the fire department, you know, immediate access and codes, uh, connections so that, um, they, you know, could be able to access the problem.
Also, the, the board had requested some additional archaeology in the areas where we're going to be expanding utilities for gates, for control gates, and also fences and gates. Um, I believe that was the only portion that was required to have additional archaeology. Just wanted to confirm that with the board. That is underway as well. We are doing the supplemental field work probably in the next week or so, so we hope to have that information at our next meeting. Similarly, um, when we began to engage, um, this board with the pre-applications and the process, we also submitted our jurisdictional determinations in New York State D.C. because we can have wetlands on site. Um, we are approaching, I think, on the twelfth is actually our ninety days, so we are very close to that ninety to one-hundred day period. We will also be looking to satisfy that requirement. Uh, one thing that, you know, was mentioned in the field that I just wanted to clarify about, when I was actually speaking with Craig in the field and, and talked about just a little bit of circulation, historical circulation on the site. Um, I had, you know, sort of mentioned that this road, this farm road extends between all of the sites, over the historic sites, Aster Courts, the original Aster Mansion, T Corp property, and then all the way up to SSS Farms. That is through here, and there also was a historic driveway that actually did go along this east side of the property.
On the other side of the beach.
Yeah, it's actually here, it's right here on this side of the property. There was almost an extension of the roadway here, and it did go all the way up into SSS Farms. Um, that was abandoned over time, but there is actually a utility used in here that actually protects that hell with here. We have three phase power in that location, so that will not remain. Um, it's just one of the things that we heard in the field, just wanted to talk about. Other than that, I don't have any additional updates, so I'd certainly like to begin discussion if there is any. Um, we know that the CAB, HAPAC, and members of this board who all, you know, joined us on the site visits who are interested in your comments, and I know that there may be some letters back, I'm not sure, you know...
Do you want to ask you a little first, Jim?
Um, the only question I have, we talked about the gate, um, and that limited access then to, um, fur lift. Have you looked into the status of that issue, Fire Chief, with anyone else? Is that, you know, the Fire Chief, only specifically said it's okay in terms of fur lift?
Yes.
Yeah, I just took care, sorry, checking out my notes.
So, the lighting, the fire department is given on the code to necessarily access the gate.
And then, your entrepreneurs at CBA, um, some of those are in progress, I know that they made it last month, so, just going to go over it.
Yeah, uh, they had, um, kept their public hearing open at the request of this board. Last time we went there, they did not have a meeting, maybe it's a state, I see them in the middle of this.
All right, I'll look, we'll look to the planning board members who've made the site visit to, uh, I asked question to make comments on your observations.
I have one question. This, just to clarify, this filing is just for the garden scale train, the gates and the fence. Have we looked at, have we looked at...
This application is for, uh, the, uh, completion of what was the master plan, conceptually approved, uh, ride-on train, major train. So, that includes what is the north loop, which is here, and the east loop, which is here. Incorporated into the east loop is the garden scale train. Um, the garden scale train has buildings associated with it, those buildings are part of our CBA approval. And then, uh, this application does include what are the changes to this fence area here. We discussed in detail, and then also the, um, small shared flag portion between T Corp to KPH two, just the south.
What's the status with the, um, above straight bridge?
The what?
The, the big...
That is, that is included in this application.
That's in this application?
That is correct.
That hasn't been previously approved?
Not under a site plan, conceptually master plan approved, but, um, all elements of the master plan were approved with the condition that they would come before the board as individual site plan applications in the future.
Okay, so, that's at issue with this filing, and also, um, in front of the CBA, you have the buildings that are associated with garden scale train, with conservatory and the things that we, that we looked at or laid out. There's also, is it a height variance that you need for the bridge?
Correct, uh, originally, the, uh, trestles or, uh, or superstructures for any sort of a trestle are considered structures, structures as accessory structures, so they will require CPA permitting. Uh, the accessory structure maximum height is twenty feet. Uh, we can have elements of, uh, the Phase three loop that are above twenty feet. And we can have elements of the tower and the truss system for the signature bridge, which is above twenty feet, also requires some variance, and then the buildings are some shape.
So, what, what's the overall height of that?
So, uh, the overall height, uh, variance that we're requesting for the Phase three loop is twenty-nine point three feet. Uh, and then for the, uh, the truss system and towers for the signature bridge, which are considered one structural alone, um, the maximum height there, I believe, is fifty-nine point three. I'm going to want to check those numbers, but it's close to...
And that's the variance of this overall?
That is the overall, so, so the variance is actually twenty minus those, those two.
Okay.
I'd like to start with this end, and I'd like to go one by one with the planning board members, and then we'll jump to Tom and, uh, please, any comments, observations?
No, but excited to hear, you know, just from the members at the visit, because of course I couldn't make it last minute. But, um, from what I understand, I feel like I, you know, more than share it, I understand a lot of the proposal and what I can tell, so I don't have any questions.
Karen?
Well, no, the site visit was very good, explained a lot.
No, the site visit was very good, explained a lot, the pictures every day, like this looks like a lot too.
Sean?
Overall, I'd say it's vast. I mean, it's just no reality without saying that. It is, it is well done. You know, like, I was honored for materials and how well things were put together, overall. I think, you know, it's a unique space, it is an open space that used to be an old brick building that I think is going to be a beautiful interest to the property. It is very unique. You know, I, it's, I don't know, it's big, it's a lot, but it is well done through the woods, like, it's not, this is going to be quite visible, but compared to everything else that's been done to me, it's not. It's not extremely visible, but it's vast, and I think that's like the only word I keep coming back to, because it's a lot, it's a lot for a small property. It's also kind of unique and cool, it's the way that you like trains.
Can I get anything else?
I thought you'd get to me last, but I, I feel like it's really out of scale as far as the bridge is concerned, but also this, the continuation of this development, I don't feel has the proper deference to the national historic landmark landscape that this property encompasses. I know we've been very careful in the past with the properties that are along the river because they're so important and so meaningful to this location, you know, and it feels like a theme park is being constructed on this historic property, and I find it objectionable, and I think that consideration should be given to the scale and the impact on this unique property and what it means. It's, I think, fine to do it in any other location, whether it be Las Vegas, you know, have it in St. Petersburg, but this is an important historic site in a town that values and rehers its history.
Probably the only people to join us, but I'd ask for your comments on this stuff. Well, I think that great, he's saying something that resonates, but I think it's a little like, right, we have a master plan that was pretty much...
This was all before I was done with the rest of the... If it's been approved, you know, the master plan, you can't now go in and say, I mean, you can make modifications, but you can't only tell the man or the, well, you change your own.
Well, the master plan, I think if I'm correct, the master plan in the cultural landscape of Florida was, you know, did not envision this latest garden scale installation, is that correct?
No, this specific location was...
Right, it was discussed for across the street.
No, it's actually near, it's near the station house.
Okay, okay, so the concept, if I'm being correct, the concept was included in the master plan, so it was not unanticipated or something like that. I think the difficulty, and I, like I share your sensibility and concern, and I think, you know, we're talking about the different companies, we're careful. We've never had an application that has had this sort of different, unique aspect of it, and we have to give our full emphasis after all, fire department, and if it is allowable within our zone of law, and I haven't seen anything that we, if it's not allowed, it may not be desired, but there's limits between whether it's allowable or whether it's desirable.
I think what we've said in the past is that it could be, you know, in other words, they're not bulldozing the landscape, changing the terrain in some way.
And I think that one of the things that, and we have said that, certainly the G-scale train that we looked at, with some amount of effort and a great deal of funds could be removed and long could be returned largely to what we saw the other day. And I have been personally comforted going back on site visits with the other train installation, what we saw, because certainly on paper, when you see, when you see the loops and the all of, everything that's going on in there, my expectation when I went out the first time in the field was that I was going to see a great deal more destruction to the natural landscape than I would have, than I thought. I mean, when I went out, I was comforting like, oh, there's still trees, there's still the topographical features of the property that haven't been destroyed. Now, are there aspects of it that have been altered? Certainly, but it is far less both visually and physically intrusive than I could ever imagine in trying to interpret those site plans, which to me look like the bodies began just on a map.
This section might not echo that, is that my understanding?
Might not echo.
The original, the first installation. This might be more visible than...
The G-scale train, well, put it this way, the G-scale train, as far as I can tell, will not be visible for anywhere other than inside the property.
Right.
It's, the train is a store.
It's like the display of Williams during Christmas time.
Exact scale, and by remove, if I'm correct, the change in the location of the gates is further enhancing or diminishing the opportunity for anybody that isn't supposed to be on the property to be on the property. So, in the past, you could get a little further in, and there you get a glimpse of it, certainly who's moved further out. There's no way that, I suppose you could walk down the road from front lift and get a glimpse of it, but that's all internal, and there's nothing that's going to be seen visually, so there's no external visual impact.
I feel very strongly that this property, as well as many other properties around the town, have a historic and cultural importance that will hopefully outlive all of us, and what we do at this moment in time is determinative of that. And personally, I like the G-scale train, I think it's very cute, and the little buildings that have been put in are top, I took a couple of pictures, but in brackets, I think were I feel like it's my duty, you know, the applicant can hire experts to come in and speak to the applicant's needs and desires. It's up to me and it's up to the rest of us to speak to the interests of the town, and yes, it is private property, but it is a historic property within the town, right? And we do have regulations that govern and in some cases restrict what people can do with their private property, and that's been upheld by the Supreme Court in New York Central versus Landmark Preservation Commission of New York City, I'm sorry, no, Panhandle, because it's a little, anyway. I, I know when the property up the street, the, didn't hear name of it?
Heinz.
Heinz property. When they wanted to, when they wanted to make changes to their riverfront estate, they came to the meeting. He was in the audience with his kids, and I felt like that gave me the assurance that they were as invested in the meaning of their property as any of the rest of us could be. And I just, I feel like there's a vacancy in that respect, that this is being done by some outside unforeseen force, you know, hiring perfectly competent and well-meaning professionals to do their job, and I, you know, I don't hold it against anybody for doing the best job that they can, appreciate that, but I think we can do our job as well, and I'm, I'm...
I think we're there, Jim.
I'm not going there.
And I appreciate, do you have a proposal or...
Well, let's see where this is going.
Just to clarify though, the scale of this is still different than the master plan scale, right?
Scale of this component of the master plan is as it was originally, which is to be the same garden scale.
The only difference, if I'm wrong, is that...
Would you guys speak into the...
Only if you did. So, I think the only difference here is that the, that was not part of master plan, it was the connected bridge, the specs of the connected bridge. And I just, one question, the, the height of that is based, because that's in a huge ravine, right? It's like, you know, because you're like here, and then you go over this huge ravine, that height is based upon the bottom of that ravine, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And if you were at, if you were at ground height before that ravine, that would be an interesting number to know also, because I think when I hear 59 feet, I'm like, wow, but in reality, there's like a 30-foot dip in the ground there. I might be wrong, but I think that would be helpful for some of the members that weren't there.
And is it, am I correct? Except, so the bridge, I'm probably not going to be describing this correctly, but the only element of the G-scale design that, that exits that portion of the property, former combat property, is the bridge, is that correct? There are no other components of the G-scale installation that are outside that maniary?
The entire G-scale is located within the group of...
Except for this.
This is not G-scale, this is part of a ride-on train. This is part of...
Right, but it could be part of a ride-on that didn't have the superstructure. But I'm just talking engineering-wise, physically, right? I mean, the track is there to cross the ravine to get the regular scale to the garden scale. So, it's, it's an important component to move the train where we want it to be able to circle. Where I'm going is that the vanity part of it, if you will, and that's my word, and perhaps not appropriately used, but that, that is fun, but not necessarily, necessary in a functional and operational world.
Understood.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I think we're trying to wrap our heads around...
Yeah, this is not going over Long Island Sound as the Hellgate Bridge does, you know, it's not, it's not bridging a chasm that it, you could get from A to B with a trestle like the rest of the, it doesn't have to be a signature bridge, I think is what I'm saying.
I think the fact that it's all a signature bridge is probably important, but, all right.
We still want to span.
You need to span.
We want to span, for the spanning, you know, the idea is to span the wetland. Oh, it's a wetland, yeah, yeah, so we're spanning, all right, so, there are different implications if you're putting, you know, high levels in that ground. Just as, you know, a portion of Phase 1 and 2, you span, you know, a section, you know, the ravines, right, and a small section, I'm going to do at least, you span that.
I have another further question, and that is looking over the long term. You know, when a solar farm came before this board, we wanted to make sure that it was going to be maintained and that when it was no longer functional, everything would be removed, right? Now, does that idea in any way refer to this? 25 years from now, could there be a rusty train rail system that is no longer operational?
Yes.
Is there anything that this board can do to prevent that?
I don't know, but, I don't mean to say fire, but, I think, going back to what Sean said, it's the uniqueness and the vastness that complicates it. Anything that we improve, somebody could walk away completely and like fall to care. I mean, small, big, large, I mean, I could use some examples we've seen tonight about, you know, modifications to landscapes and, you know, and what if, what if the courts aren't used, what if this? And Delise probably sees it in real estate all the time, it's like, people do things and then walk away and abandon them. So, it isn't that it doesn't have all the other circumstances, it's just this is so big and so different and so unique, but I appreciate how hard it is to wrap our heads around it and say, I can't, I mean, there's no predicting, I can't imagine the next person who might buy this property, it should there be one, would buy something, they'd have a rusty old train track running through it, and it's just, who knows, who knows? So, I guess, I would ask Jim what we think the next steps are here. We still have information coming in from the fire department, we have your jurisdictional determination, is there any outstanding other information we're waiting on?
Archaeology.
The CBA?
CBA.
So, I think this evening, we're just going to, you know, ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. If there's any additional information anyone here would request of the applicant, now is the time to bring that forward, so they, if you're going to know what else we might be interested in getting from them. Then could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until July 7? Until July 7?
Well, second.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose extension motion, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Oh, do you remind me that we did not make a motion to continue now, so can we, will we want to make two?
I'm going to start with a couple more.
You want to go a month, two months?
I want to go longer.
No, I mean, it's...
Or do you want to do a month?
I don't know if it's up yet, but I should hope that it'll be done in two weeks.
I'd say do a month, yeah.
No, I want to go in two weeks.
Yeah, you want to see the progress.
I want, I want, I want to schedule it two weeks out so that we get an update, and I would suggest that we ask the engineer from CPL to be present at that meeting to give us a full report on what has been transpiring around the neighborhood. From Joel, let's ask the engineer who's going to be working with him to come and report, does that work?
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
June 16?
June 16. Do I have a motion?
So.
June 16, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose extension motion, thank you. Especially only Gary, engineer, I understand Gretchen is still waiting for Didi, okay? So, we'll leave that on this discussion only. Jim's asked for us to address Bach and Schipler here.
Yeah, so Bach and Schipler, as you know, they've been on the agenda for a while because we're waiting on the jurisdictional determination from the DEC. The DEC did get back to them, and based on the view that they did, they asked the applicants to move the accessory structure, I think it was about 13 feet from where it was proposed. I guess they found that the wetland was a little further than they thought, that's not the plan, so I won't actually go for it. But regardless, I don't feel that the change that DC has requested of the building being moved 13 feet is going to result in any, I mean, you help me otherwise, but result in any real changes that would require us to reopen the public hearing in front of the planning board. So, my suggestion would be we just tell the applicant...
At least it shifts it a little bit, almost behind the house.
Yeah. So my, my thought was that we just, if the board's okay with it, tell the applicant to submit the updated plans based on where the D E C asked them to go, and then we can just consider that kind of a sort of field change of sorts.
Demand it as a change.
Right, and then we will take this up again in two weeks for approval. Because I don't think that the change is going to result in any additional discussion or need to reopen the public hearing.
As we recall, there was no one from the public present at any of the public hearings, and so.
And we had a lot of some neighbors of deposit.
Um, do you want a motion for that?
Yeah, I guess not.
A motion in the second.
Motion to, yeah.
Second.
Because we normally close the public hearing on that, yeah, okay. Uh, we have two time extensions. Request, propose.
One of the time's extension first.
Let's see what this is.
The, uh.
Stone Valley?
Yeah, first one is Stone Valley LLC. Uh, they applied for and received site plan special use permit approval for creation of a farm access drive, removal of a portion of the existing stone wall on River Road. Best thing for me to do is to hand over that file.
That isn't one right, the bridge approach.
Yeah, the bridge approach right across from the water.
It was this one up here right across from me earlier. Remember, they were operating the stone walls, and they put a farm road down here. Uh, they need a little bit more time, um, to, uh, to move things forward. So they're requesting an extension, it's a paperwork extension, no proposed changes to the plans, it's previously approved. Uh, so I drafted a resolution to the board's consideration. stating that in consideration of a written request timely made per section one twenty-five seventy D two for site plan and one twenty-five sixty-six H five for special use permit, the time around the back planning board hereby grants a six-month extension for the satisfaction of conditions and requirements. Set forth the planning board's approval resolution date December second, twenty twenty-four. This approval hereby extends the satisfaction of conditions and requirements for the special use permit and site plan from June second, twenty twenty-five to December second, twenty twenty-five.
I hope we approve that. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries.
Great, the second timeline extension is from Mr. Heinz. Uh, Wolfville LLC applied for and received site plan special use permit approval for construction of a pool pavilion associated landscaping and sanitary and large supply connection to the principal structure. Again, it's a paperwork extension, but no proposed changes to the plans, it's previously approved. So I have drafted another resolution. In consideration of a written request timely made for section one twenty-five seventy eight D two for site plan and one twenty-five sixty-six H five for special use permit, the time around back planning board hereby grants a six-month extension for satisfaction of conditions and requirements set forth in the planning board's approval resolution for Wolfville LLC, Christopher Miller Heinz, is December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This approval hereby extends the satisfaction of conditions and requirements for the special use permit and site plan from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to December sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I hope we approve. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. And we have two ZVA referrals?
We do, so these are the two that we had discussed last time. Um, we decided not to submit anything, uh, you want to think about these a little bit more. I don't believe either of these have gone through the ZVA yet because of the meeting change, right? So, uh, the first one was Stotzkirk Holding LLC. This is the proposal for the flooring showroom and attached storage building along Route nine G that is before the board. The easiest thing for me to do is just to bring this up. It was the parcel here where they're proposing, um, a flooring store building. They had the alignment here for the county trail. And so, um, they are requesting a front yard setback variance of eighty-three feet, side yard setback variance of two feet, rear yard setback variance of seven feet for the proposed building, and apartment setback requirement fifty-one feet from the front yard setback variance. We had waited to move on this because we knew the rear end site visits, which were undertaken, and just have some additional discussion. So I would open it up to that discussion. I didn't write a resolution for this one because I didn't know where we'd all follow, where we're going to follow this.
My whole building envelope is impossible to really put a building there based on current standards. So no matter what, we're going to be in front of the ZVA on this. I think with the proposed, I, I know, um, my opinion was that with the proposed landscape plan that was previously put in front of us, um, I am comfortable with the setbacks that are required for this building to fit right. Uh, I think if softens up, it also provides some protection from the road and from protection from vehicles passing, et cetera.
Are they able to go back more?
No, let, yes.
So, I mean, it's a.
Yeah.
What, um, didn't we get something from the county?
We did.
Which, they, did they sort of imply that they thought they should do away with a portion of that, um, courtyard there?
The driveway in order to ensure that there was room left for the, um, county trail. I think the trail should be county trail, the trail to go through. I think there's adequate width, I know we have discussed the potential for reducing, potentially reducing that driveway area. We haven't, we'll finalize anything on that. Uh, but I do, I do believe adequate area is there regardless of whether or not that driveway changes to provide for that trail line.
Okay, but the county wants it up to local differentiation.
Correct.
I, I feel like they're not developing into it, and, you know, what they're putting there is pretty low impact. Section of the driveway.
I think it's well documented in our discussions and deliberations that we know that trail is going to stay there. And expect it to be respected, um, it's in Jim's resolutions.
Yeah, I think they would, I would put that as a condition for the approval resolution of that. We maintain, understood that it could be public use in future.
So why was there a need for a discussion on this?
Uh, because of the ZVA.
Right.
ZVA, and we're also really concerned because they have no landscape plan for us, and we didn't see the site.
But now we have landscape that we're happy with, and I think.
We have site visit?
We have site visit, yeah.
So do you want your kind of standard? I, I don't think there's anything to attach to this referral that, um, that we have concerns about. I mean, maybe, maybe you simply want to highlight the point that because the property is so constrained in terms of where this building can go, that we believe it's in the right location and, and, you know, feel in this case that the zoning variances are warranted.
Yeah, I like that.
Does that work for everybody?
Really no other way to take advantage of the otherwise derelict site.
I think the applicants to be honored for taking on a abandoned property, there is an eyesore and, um, and they certainly have been extraordinarily cooperative when we raised issues of can you do landscaping? Yes, we can do landscaping, can you do this? Yes, we can do this. So I think they've made every effort to improve their application based on the comments we've made. And maybe we just, in this case, convey to the civil court of appeals that, um, the applicant has responded to all our requests. I mean, um, out of the.
So we would do a typical response, time around back planning board, counter referral by the ZVA of an application by Staffs Kirk Holdings. I understand the site is highly conscripted with very small building envelope. Finds the requested work raises no concerns related to the variances being requested, notes, uh, recommends, sorry, did the ZVA consider?
Who said it's on good?
Yes, it's on good. ZVA consider its own judgment, the works of the criteria set forth in the time quote chapter one-two-five, including consideration of input of the paper.
And, um, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to accommodate the request of the planning board to landscape in order to, you know, mitigate the issue. May I have a motion?
Second.
What was it, David?
Aye.
Extension? Uh, timely signs, Constance Bathrick, in case ten seventy-five.
Yes, this one was the equipment rental and sales building that we had.
Didn't we have questions about equipment, didn't we?
Yeah.
And this was a double-sided sign and.
Yeah, so, uh, timely signs submitting on behalf of the applicant equipment rental and sales for variance to permit LED lighted sign, which we've heard is not the case anymore, I think, or some discussions at the ZVA. But they want a twelve-foot double-sided freestanding sign, which totaled twenty-four square feet, when the maximum permitted is eight square feet. Location is in the residential zoning district.
Yeah, but you made sure?
Yep. My computer crashed before the meeting, so I have to reopen everything, unfortunately, this is going to be a second one like that.
While you're doing that, I believe they asked about potentially having Brian Kent take up the property for. Do we, do we know?
Maybe with the booms being way up in the air.
Well, the booms have to be.
Banner signs on the fence, and.
I think it was, I think it was that quipping on the outside of the fence was the big one.
Quipping on the outside of the fence, we were also asking if there were additional, I think you asked, uh, signs in the windows, signs on the doors that add to the square footage. Um, and we didn't, I don't think we got any through that either, but we certainly could put it in a referral resolution and all of that should be taken into consideration.
Looking to have like a steel sign or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm going to search for it.
By record, the sign was much nicer than it is now.
Yes.
And it does make a lot of sense for it to be two-sided, whereas the traffic is going, see, you see both sides of the traffic.
If it's two-sided, then it gets complicated with the amount of square footage.
Correct.
Which are we talking about?
Uh, this, the same complications. Uh, the, the side at the rental place.
The rental, okay.
That's what's involved, this is a, the LEV and referral sign. For square footage. It's the same, I believe on the paper, it's the same size of sign currently right now, it's just single sign and double side.
It does seem though that we do need the answer about the signs on the buildings, right? I mean.
Uh, we just haven't, we're just going to say there's only word of appeals that they need to verify.
Okay, they need to look into it.
I don't think we have to go out and check, but just point out to them that care should be taken to ensure there aren't any other facade-mounted or internal building signs.
Cannot find it.
Gretchen, do you have it?
Gretchen, I have it.
Was it standard?
Yeah, no, no, breaking also. Before I always open up the event.
Well, the last meeting, you mentioned the building next to the family garden.
Yeah.
And you said, don't really, somebody would take care of that. As soon as you said that.
That is such a nonsense.
No, not anymore.
What happened? Yeah.
It's a little, uh, like a cinder block house next to, just to the, that was falling down. I don't know how it was ever permitted to remain standing for so long.
Because it was fenced in?
No, it wasn't, there was no fence around. They had some plastic fence, you know, about six feet in front of it.
Yeah.
But it didn't go all the way around it, and it was just like.
So did it fall down?
No, they tore it down, it's going to become part of the body shop.
Ah.
Why doesn't something like that need to come in front of the door?
The demolition?
No, the expansion of the body shop.
Well, maybe they just purchased the property as of now, they're still doing site planning, and so.
Well, I mean, there's been talk over many years, both between Phantom and the Body Shop about, there's even, we talked once about two of them going together to buy it, and then subdividing it so that they each had more property, but it was an unwilling seller for, uh, most of that time. So I, I would assume in the expansion of that commercial property, we have to come.
So Jim, is this in April, what'd you say?
No, of course.
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third, I sent the referral.
Sorry. I bet you can send less emails.
Try.
Can you send it again? Oh, he's found it, don't worry.
That's what, just wait and see if he got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, we can figure that out, don't worry about it.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's a little. So that's the sign that's proposed, and they're proposing it to be pitched perpendicular to the road, which might be double-sided. Twenty-four square feet.
There's a space between the panel that has the printing and the top.
This probably would be the LED light, my understanding is that that is no longer under discussion, might be other lighting, but I don't know for sure. The LED lighting is proposed, it's not committed at all.
Well, I think what we're saying, so conceptually, sign is more attractive than what's there. I think we support the idea that a two-sided sign is more effective for the business. However, we want to ensure that there's, that there's no LED lighting, that any lighting we need to be renewed as part of this moving forward. That we want them to confirm that there's not additional building mounted or interior signage in the inside of the building that will increase the square footage of signage in general.
Right, or that would have to be included in this application.
Correct. Is there anything else about it that?
No, I'm surprised they don't make their phone number and other things that I would think were important to the business for visible, but that's on that.
And it would increase the square footage of the leopard.
So it's there, it's just so faint.
Yeah, it's very small.
It's just they did a really light color, but.
Anything else, folks?
Actually, percentage of coverage, I can raise that.
Well, just ask them to confirm that the percentage of coverage is.
It's sixty, right?
Needs the, needs the sign.
So they're going to omit that in the box, no lights.
That's what we're, we're asking them to confirm.
My understanding is LED lights are ongoing forward, there might be something else, I don't know where that stands.
But what's on front of us is square footage, right? Technically, it's a sign.
But we can just pass on to them our other, please check on, please be sure that these, these, um, these aspects of the sign are ready, it's under discussion. Does that cover it? May I have a motion? Change ready?
Yeah, it's a subject of standard with the couple of comments.
Okay.
Standard response with a couple of comments.
Motion?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Uh, the last bit of business this evening is the, uh, zoning administrator, it's a referral from Ryan regarding a sign request from Jeffrey Valente, who we really call is the oral surgeon that's going in the form of that country.
There's, it's just the oral surgeon, I think we determined that in his hearing, that it was just going to be the back third of the building.
Correct.
And it's dental health, not mental health.
Correct.
Because I believe the, uh, county rep, whose area that's in, it's like there, and in Red Book, I think he appeared in some sort of a promotional, saying that he succeeded in getting a mental health treatment facility into that building, the old Met Country.
What, don't think it goes.
It's not mental health, it's dental health, right?
It's actually oral surgery.
Yeah.
And it is.
So, um, as you know, the oral surgery use was approved by the planning board last year, it was June third, twenty twenty-four, without proposed sign. This application is for a two-foot by three-foot double-sided sign for total. without a proposed sign. This application is for a two-foot by three-foot double-sided sign for total twelve square feet just for the oral surgery use, which does meet the requirements for sign size. The lettering also meets the requirements. In this case, time of size, we've read a lot of these, it's hard to figure out, but I ask this question all the time, so they did it for me and it appears to be reasonable, so I think it's good there. Not going to question that.
It's unusually tall, and I was going to say that, it's so high.
So it is a tall sign. It's thirty inches.
I think it's from feature.
I think. Yeah, they want to have other signs underneath it. They want to put other signs under it and they can't.
So that, so that's what I was going to tell you. So the sign, when it was originally discussed, if I remember correctly, they came in line to put in an application for two signs. And we told the applicant, he can't do that because he doesn't actually have permitted use in the other building, or the other side of the building right now. It's only for this use, so he was told that he can do it with justice. If another use comes in, we will look at this as a multi-use building and then we can look at updating the sign appropriately with another sign.
Well, he would have to.
Right, he would have to, to put another sign on the street. So I think that's probably part of the reason for height, but it is a, it is a tall sign. It's not the tallest sign on that section of road. I think the auto body shop on the road on the left that has a taller sign, we reviewed a couple of months, years ago. It's in the streets right now.
And this is coming from Brian, why?
It's a sign referral to the planning board just as a review of the design. This one doesn't need a variance in the Z V A, but all signs get referred to the planning board for review of design and any other concerns you have. The only concerns I noticed is that he's proposing vinyl sleeves and PVC caps, which I don't believe are permitted materials in the materials list. PVC is not a permitted use. And Brian talked about how sometimes the sign has PVC for the, putting the name of things on the sign and that I think is one thing, but the materials itself for the sign and the caps, I don't think should be permitted. So hopefully we can take a look at that. I also don't believe that based on the information they gave, I'm a hundred percent clear on exactly where the sign is going to be located on the site. They already pulled out the old sign, so the old sign that had the cover on it, the old Met Country sign is gone. This one, I think we provided.
The location of the sign, was it on the, the site plan?
No, there's nothing on the site plan because they weren't reporting it at the time, so we didn't want to put it on there. Same where I saw that they were going to propose this fifteen feet off of the road. I'll be, it's always nobody wants to know this.
Can we? I almost want to ask them, since work has been going on in the property, if they believe they have any potential tenants, will mine pop? I mean, I don't, I think we could delay making a decision until we know a little bit more because they're nowhere near, they're nowhere near conducting business on that site.
They still got a huge hole.
Well, actually.
We might, we might hear about twenty thousand rumors online of what's coming in there.
They could be lining up tents, though, regardless. It's been, sort of the work going on there from what I've been able to glean is a little bit bifurcated in that our site plan covered the exterior of the building, but they also have a building permit on the interior of the construction. And I believe they've been working along in the interior. I think the site work has gotten delayed for a couple of reasons, including weather, unsure, it went all the way. But I, we also believe that, we didn't believe that the entire parking lot was going to be ripped out. They thought it was simply going to be excavated in the area where the subject was going in. If you're on the property, it has all been removed and there's a lot of dirt there. That is not based on what we've seen stockpiled in the circle that we asked for it to be stockpiled. So I would, I kind of like an update from the engineer. It was from Langen as to the status of the project and whether or not they are actively engaged in conversations with potential tenants. I think to go ahead and encourage the approval of a sign to have him come in in even two months and say, oh, I've got a tenant now. I guess I'm feeling I'm not holding him up because I don't think he's ready to bring in his first customers. I think he would like to get a C O on the interior, but he can't get a C O on the interior until he's completed the side work on the exterior.
And I, I'm not opposed to vinyl, I think vinyl sleeves are low maintenance.
It's just whether it's allowed or not.
That's a, that's a weird, I mean, so if he's wrapping in metal, it's allowed?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, looks the same, looks white from the road, it's absolutely no different.
That's maybe another change we need to make.
I see, just a little, because I mean, you're basically, he's just wrapping a four-by-four, proposing something that's going to look white and clean for pretty much ever, and if it doesn't, you just go out and you wipe it off and it'll just be white and clean forever instead of constant painting. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I understand that it's written there, but I think, I think there's others, I think a dated sign looks worse than a sign that has a vinyl sleeve around it that makes it look painted or something.
You looking for that?
It's, it's under the design criteria, fortunately.
Well, if we're not going to take it, if we're not going to.
Well, I, I'm just, yeah, we're not voting or.
Not tonight.
An appendix A, is that?
So Melanie, just to clarify, what you're suggesting is that this just gets on hold until they're, until they're further down the road. And then we can have this conversation when they're closer to moving. We can move it two weeks out to the next agenda and in the meantime, make an attempt to reach out to Christina, Christina at Langen and just get an update on the overall project and, and how the search is going for attention. She may or may not know, she may refer us to Mr. Valenti, but maybe it's time to talk to him and just say, how's it going?
Very good.
Well, if you're all in favor then, that would conclude the meeting. And just have a motion to continue this discussion to the June 16th meeting.
I second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
No, just so everyone knows, it's in the sign criteria, their specific criteria states, all signs with the exception of window signs shall be constructed of wood, metal, or baseboard materials.
We also.
When it's a shall, there's no getting out of it without a clearance. We can't leave that. If it was a should, that would be a different discussion.
It may be something that we should go from this.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things like that, but, you know.
And it's very valid.
I looked, looked here. I know my favorite, like, those fucking guys have to repaint the wood, right?